...the school board at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 5th, 2014 in the administration building boardroom on the lower level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. I'd like to welcome Mr. Bowden and Mrs. Casey to their first regular meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board. Thank you for joining us in this service. There's an announcement about public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll now move to consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Fee, thank you. The check register is at the front for consideration as part of the consent agenda. Is there any Board discussion on the consent agenda? Mrs. Fee, please.
Ms. Wright, thank you very much, I just have a comment. We're getting to the time of year where we start to see people leaving the district on our consent agenda, and this is always something of a sad time of year. In fact, I remember Mrs. Weber sometimes voting no when there was someone who she particularly didn't want to see leave. I have one of those this time, I'm not going to vote no, I won't go that far, but I do want to thank Kate Dombrowski from Longfellow. She is listed here as the Library Media Specialist, and she is that, but she was also the Theater Director and has touched countless lives of our students at Longfellow. They just had a great performance this weekend, so it's kind of sad to see her go. So, thank you to her and to the rest of the students, but I just wanted to call her out for her special service to our students over many years.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there any other Board discussion or comment? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We'll now move to the recognitions portion of the consent agenda, and I'll remind Board members to please speak into the microphone, I don't, it doesn't seem they're picking up so strongly tonight. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. The Wauwatosa Education Association announced the 2014 Friends of Education Award recipients. The recipients, school staff and volunteers, are being honored for their contribution to the education of students in the Wauwatosa School District. The honorees will recognize at an awards presentation on April 29th. The 2014 Friends of Education Award recipients are Andy Barnes, West, Tiffany Bianchi, Longfellow, Roy Brent, Whitman, Julie Borum, Plank Road School, James Chia, WSTEM, Joanna Clemente, Montessori, Darren Gordon, Detention Center, Robert Hyvelin and Andrea Vetch, Underwood, Jackie Costa-Helbig and Bob Helbig, Madison, Benny Johnson Jr., East, Diane Jolie, Lincoln, Lisa Maglio, Washington, Deb Palick, Jefferson, Marie Ryder, Roosevelt, Michelle Schultz, Eisenhower, Terry Succi, McKinley, and Hannah Vessey-Heller, and Jim Heller, Wilson.
The Suburban Women's Club of Wauwatosa awarded four scholarships totaling $3,200 to four Wauwatosa School District teachers. Scholarships for $800 each were awarded as follows. Jennifer Engel, English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at Longfellow, Jessica Gall, Social Studies teacher at West, Michael Perulsky, Social Studies teacher at Plank Road School, and Carrie Strife-Stussy, Reading Specialist at Washington.
U.S. News recently announced Wauwatosa East High School was selected as one of the best high schools in the nation, ranking fourth in Wisconsin and 570th in the nation. U.S. News teamed with the American Institute for Research, AIR, to analyze more than 31,200 public high schools nationwide. From the 31,200 public high schools analyzed, 19,411 schools advanced to the next step in U.S. News ranking process. Ranking was based on key principles. A great high school must serve all of its students well, not just those who are college-bound, and be able to produce measurable academic outcomes to show the school is successfully educating its student body across a range of performance indicators. As part of the ranking process, U.S. News determined East High School as 90 percent proficient in reading and 86 percent proficient in mathematics. U.S. News calculated test score values based on student performance on state exit exams and internationally available exams on college-level coursework.
Wisconsin Association of Colleges of Teacher Education awarded a pre-service educator-mentor award to Madison Elementary School Principal Lori Lester recently. Lester was nominated for the award by Cardinal Stritch University Faculty Members. CSU Chair of Undergraduate Teacher Education, Dr. Calavan Byrd, delivered her award as a surprise during a meeting with other CSU faculty members. The pre-service educator-mentor award recognizes outstanding educators who have demonstrated a sustained pattern of mentoring pre-service educators for at least five years. Lester earned a certificate from CSU, and she frequently hosts candidates for field experiences at Madison Elementary School.
Wauwatosa West High School Social Studies teacher Christopher Lazarsky was recently named a 2014 PBS Learning Media Digital Innovator. Lazarsky was one of 100 educators selected by PBS throughout the nation for their commitment to innovative teaching practices that integrate digital media and technology in the classroom. As a winner of the 2014 PBS Learning Media Digital Innovator Award, Lazarsky will participate in a professional development program through PBS that includes virtual training, access to resources, and invitations to special events. The program will run from June 2014 to the end of the 2014-15 school year.
Thank you for reading those recognitions. We will now move to action items. The first item is the election of school board officers. In accordance with Policy 0150, the Board elects its officers at the first meeting in May. Board members will nominate and elect officers by written ballot. All Board members are eligible for all four officer positions except Mike Meyer, who is not eligible for the presidency, as I am coming to the end of two consecutive years, and that is the term limit on sitting in the President's chair. So with that, I will turn this over to Dr. Erdl to manage this portion of the meeting.
According to School Board Policy 0150, school board officers will be nominated and elected in the following order: President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Clerk. Paper ballots have been prepared to be used in the nomination and election process. Board members are listed alphabetically on the ballots. Per Board policy, the President and Vice President are not eligible for more than two consecutive one-year terms. As Mr. Meyer mentioned, he is not eligible to serve as President. His name has been removed from the ballot for nomination and the vote for President. Will be on the ballot for the purpose of nominating a President. Please either nominate one candidate or indicate abstention from this round on the ballot.
Now, to explain our process, we first nominate on paper ballot. The Board does not announce the counts or who nominated whom, but these are public records available for examination after the meeting. So with that, we'll begin. We also do not read the nomination count, we only read which Board members have received
Nominated for President, Mrs. Randall. So the four members that are up for a vote for President, Mrs. Fee, Mr. Croner, Mrs. Muehlfeld, and Mrs. Randall. And the vote for President. Mrs. Fee. Mr. Croner. Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Muehlfeld. And Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Randall will be recommended for President. Next up is nomination for Vice President.
So to be clear, this is the nomination round and not the voting round, correct, Dr. Erdl?
Correct.
Okay.
And nominations for Vice President. So the voting for Vice President, please vote for Mrs. Casey, Mr. Croner, or Mrs. Muehlfeld. And the vote for Vice President, Mrs. Casey. Mr. Croner. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Croner. And Mr. Croner. Nobody received the majority of the votes, which is four votes, so we will do a second Again, the vote for Vice President, Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Croner. Mr. Croner. Mrs. Casey will be recommended as Vice President. Now the nomination for Treasurer.
So just as a reminder, this is the nomination round, not the voting round. I provide this reminder because long ago I lost track once, well, so, to be honest here.
Mr. Croner. So the four nominated members, Mr. Bowden, Mrs. Fee, Mr. Croner, and Mr. Meyer. The vote, Mrs. Fee. Mr. Bowden. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Croner. Mr. Bowden. Nobody received the four votes, majority, so we'll do a second vote. For Treasurer.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Fee.
I would withdraw my name from nomination for that position.
That is, you're right. So, Mrs. Fee is withdrawn from nomination. Thank you, Mrs. Fee. I'm sure it helps, it's a good lot.
Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer will be recommended for Treasurer. And nomination for Clerk. Mr. Croner. Mr. Bowden. So nominated for Clerk, Mr. Bowden, Mrs. Fee, Mr. Croner, and Mrs. Muehlfeld. And the vote for Clerk, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Fee. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mr. Croner. Mr. Bowden. We will do a second vote for Clerk, as nobody has a majority of votes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Again, with only one vote, I would withdraw my name from nomination.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Same here.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee, and thank you, Mr. Bowden. That is your privilege.
This is the second vote for Clerk.
So, Dr. Erdl, just for a reminder who remains?
Mr. Croner and Mrs. Muehlfeld. The second vote for Clerk, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mrs. Muehlfeld. Mr. Croner. And Mr. Croner. Mrs. Muehlfeld will be recommended for Clerk.
So, recommendations are, to conclude, Dr. Erdl, Mary Jo Randall for President, Kristy Casey for Vice President, Michael Meyer for Treasurer, and Sharon Muehlfeld for Clerk, correct?
Correct.
All right. May I have a volunteer please to read the motion and fill in the names with the respective offices?
I can read it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee.
Would you like me to read the second item at the same time, or would you like separate vote?
I think it would be fine if we combined the votes.
I will read then. It is recommended that the following people be elected Officers of the Wauwatosa School Board in accordance with Policy Number 0150, for a term beginning tonight and ending May 2015. President, Mary Jo Randall; Vice President, Kristy Casey; Treasurer, Michael Meyer; Clerk, Sharon Muehlfeld. It is further recommended that the Superintendent be appointed to act as Secretary to the Board, and I so move.
Is there a second? Mr. Bowden, thank you. Do we take discussion?
Sure.
I suppose, as a formality, yes. Is there any Board discussion? Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Madam President, Mary Jo Randall, you have the gavel.
Can I bring my own chair? Higher.
Or you could share it from there, either way.
Okay, I can do that.
Is that your wish?
Yeah.
All right.
Is that okay?
Yes. We are going to...
Volunteed, is that okay?
For formalities, we're going to give you the little plaque.
Take your name, take it.
Okay.
Here, I'll take your, the secretary, I'll take your...
Okay. President? If I may, I would just like to thank Mr. Meyer for his few years of serving as our President. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fee, you're very gracious. I had the help of all of you, and I certainly needed it, so with that...
Okay, thank you. So, we move on to student learning. Mr. Croner?
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the attached list of prospective graduates from East and West High Schools, with the understanding that students will complete all high school graduation requirements, and I so move.
Any Board discussion? Any community comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll call vote. Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Student Services, that would be me. It's recommended that the School...
Point of order?
Point of order.
Sorry.
Mrs. Fee was...
I don't believe it's appropriate for the Chair to make a motion, if Mrs. Muehlfeld appears to be volunteering. Oh, no? Okay. I would be happy to read it if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Okay. It is recommended that the School Board approve the contract for the 2014-15 school year between SEAS number one and the District for Services and Personnel totaling $252,849.16, and I so move.
Second.
Board discussion on this, SEAS one contract? Yes.
If I could just ask, there are a couple of items on here which are rather large amounts just for seats. Sometimes we get an explanation, just as a reminder of what these seats are. For instance, I don't recall myself what Turning Point is.
Turning Point is a program, it's in elementary-age schools for students in kindergarten through eighth grade with significant emotional behavior disorders, and it's located on the, it's currently located on the county grounds.
And are we currently using the number of seats that are recommended for next year?
Yes, we are, we are using all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other... Any other questions or comments? Any community comment? Okay, Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. On to the superintendent report, Mr. Meyer.
It is recommended that the school board approve the appointment of Board Member Sharon Muefeld as district representative to the Cooperative Educational Service Agency Number One, known as CISA Number One. This appointment includes attending the annual convention to be held on May 20, 2014, and I so move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any board comment or question? Mrs. Muefeld, please.
Oh, I'll speak. I've been serving on the board's behalf for a number of years, and I am happy to be serving again.
Anyone else? And I would like to thank Mrs. Muefeld for her continuing role in that. Appreciate it. Is there any community comment on this? Okay, Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Okay, we move into the reports section of the agenda then, and the first report will be from the Student Learning Department on the Library and Media Program. And Mrs. Aronberger will introduce the presenters.
This evening, Jenny O'Dowd, the Library and Media Services Coordinator for Elementary, and Jane Stortz, who is the Content Team Leader for Secondary Library and Media Services, and also the Library and Media Services at Whitman Middle School, will be giving you an overview of our Library and Media Program.
Hi. I'm Jenny. I'm the Elementary Library Coordinator. We're here basically to give you a snapshot of the library program K-12 and what's changed in the last few years, as well as what our vision is and where we're moving to in the future. First of all, the Library and Media Program's here to provide resources, print and digital, also to provide information skills, finding information online, being able to interpret information, whether in print or online, using technology appropriate to the need, and keeping the kids safe, teaching online safety and ethics when they're online. Also, we play a big role in leading staff development, especially in the areas of technology integration and information literacy skills.
When Jenny and I were preparing the information to present to you tonight, we kind of talked about some statistics that we could go over, and we thought it might be nice to just give you an idea of a typical day, a typical week, or what each school might be up to. In our elementary program, in a typical day, an elementary library aide interacts with more than 200 students. At the elementary schools, they'll check out about 400 books a day. In a middle school, we have a little bit of a different schedule, part fixed and part flexible for the library, and a secondary librarian will see classes for book checkout and for research during a typical week. A secondary librarian will also collaborate with classroom teachers, projects, and research as the week goes on. Over a period of a month, each school library could potentially circulate over 1,000 items.
And a big part of our position is offering resources and having them available anytime, anywhere. To do that, a lot of our things are online. We have the new website this year, but before that, we've had elementary and secondary websites. Most of the things are here, but I'm just going to show you a couple. Destiny is the library catalog that we purchased last year and have been using in order to allow catalog searching from anywhere. So anyone actually could go to our website and take a peek at what's available at each library, do a search, K-12. With a login, however, a student, staff, a parent that's interested can put, create book lists, can have things recommended to them. There's a social aspect that even the students can interact with each other, recommend books to each other. They can put a book on hold, so another big part of our program is interlibrary loan. A few years ago, when I came on, we started the elementary schools sharing with each other and doing formal interlibrary loan where they can put a book on hold. They get put on a list, and as soon as it's available from any school, it goes to them next. This year, we started doing that formally. They've always done it informally, but now formally, the kids can put, place a book on hold, and it'll come from middle school as well, or vice versa. And now, next year, we plan to go K-12 with the, with sharing of resources through Destiny. There's also an overdrive component, which we started about three years ago. And overdrive is a resource, of course, I didn't log into this one, but it's a resource that's online. It's also available in the public library, but we have it here at school now as well, where kids, parents, staff can log on and download digital books, eBooks, or audiobooks to put on their own devices, or our school devices that we also loan. We have on the website, this is just the elementary site, but we have, let me see, online resources. A lot of our things are available. We have online subscriptions, like at the elementary level, we have PebbleGo, for instance, which is one that we pay for, that provides information literacy. It provides a database of information for the smallest kids, because we're trying to teach information literacy to kids that are K-3. Some of our youngest ones aren't, they can't take in the information that is in the other databases, so this provides information and the things that are interesting to them, with pictures, with words, with, it'll even read the content out loud to them. Badger Link, we all have links to on our websites. That's free in the state of Wisconsin, and it provides a wealth of information, research databases, but also content like Sounds Abound, where they can get sound clips for free through Badger Link to use in their projects, or video clips, or all kinds of things, book advisory-type websites. On our websites as well as our subscriptions, I have a whole bunch of other information, Creative Web 2.0 tools that they can use, great book and reading sites that they can go to, so that's all on our websites. And like I said, the secondary has a very similar one. Four students, secondary library. Their databases are a little bit different, though. They subscribe to a few more that elementary wouldn't need because they need higher-level content, like SIR's Researcher is a very specific one that's meant for older children. So these are all resources that our library, Common School Funds, pay for to provide the resources that our kids and our staff need to do the work that they're doing.
As part of the library program, all librarians are involved in staff development in their buildings. Two years ago, or Jenny came three years ago, but two years ago, she started a program called Tech Tuesdays that she does every Tuesdays. In these, she offers a variety of strategies for technology integration in the classroom. She sometimes designs her own ideas for the presentations she does, and other times she does surveys or forms to determine what they would, what the staff would desire to see. And she does those every week, and we've kind of taken an estimate of how many staff we've had involved in these various things over the years, and we think this one has involved over 150 staff members at various time periods. In addition to that, this previous year, Jamie Price started ed tech coach positions at the secondary schools and, and the elementary, too. And this year, two librarians were ed tech coaches along with classroom teachers. Next year, we hope that all four secondary librarians will be ed tech coaches in their buildings and work along with classroom teachers in designing the professional development, staff development for technology integration topics in each of the schools. We do that along with Jamie Price, and he has us come in for meetings and get various training or design ideas and work together on that. All these things so far have led to really daily collaboration and support that librarians naturally do in our, in our school buildings on a regular basis. But outside of that, we have also had a partnership with WEI, which is Wisconsin Education Innovations. That's something that Beth has had for years. And in the past, the district has offered professional development, staff development, where staff members also had the option of taking the, taking the professional development as a graduate course and getting graduate credits. This has been something that the district has done for years. I think it goes back as far as Pat Gilbert, one of our district teacher leaders, doing it with topics on differentiation and stuff. But as years have gone on, we've kind of added to that. A few years ago, I started the iPad in Education course. Then when Jenny came, she started the Smart Notebook course. And then when Jenny and I started working together, we designed a Google Apps course. And ever since then, Jenny and I have been co-teaching the classes that are listed on this slide here, and we've probably had about 90 people go through the Smart Notebook class, about 150 go through the iPad, and approximately 120 go through the Google course. And again, the staff members could just attend the course as staff development or professional development, or they could enroll for one, two, or three credits, and then the WEI office would work that, or handle that part of it through some graduate program, either Cardinal Stritch or Concordia College. We wanted to not just talk about what we've been doing in the past, but what we see as our vision for a continuing library program in the schools. We always want to make sure that we have a good supply of current and appealing, both physical books and digital books, available for our students. We also want them to be able to access these at any time that would, they would have the need for those resources. So this includes the use outside of school. That's one of the reasons why we added overdrive a few years ago. We also, as librarians, have to then provide the guidance in how to use all the resources, whether they're in the school building or outside of our district school buildings. As librarians, we're also constantly involved in cross-curricular collaboration and connections with the classrooms. We always want our libraries to be comfortable physical spaces for groups to work and meet and read. As librarians, we always want to have seamless technology integration at every grade level. This involves use of mobile equipment to support increased access and to keep space flexible when we need to handle multiple groups and research projects and other kind of projects at the same time. And then, as librarians, we are always trying to continue to develop more varied staff development to meet all the needs of the staff in the district. It's not something we do on our own, but we're, we're happy to be a part, a large part of it in providing any kind of staff development that they'll need.
And in conclusion, I once had a fifth-grade parent of a fifth-grade student, I taught elementary at the time, tell me that I was going to always be important in this child's eyes because I was the keeper of the books. And while I thought that was wonderful, I'd like to be important, they, they kind of missed part of what I want everybody to understand, what Jane and I both want, that the library is more than just a collection of books, and the librarian is more than just a keeper of books, that we also help spread the information literacy skills, the online safety skills, the technology integration is all as important to us as these other pieces. It's all part of being a literate person. And Lynton Weeks was a, or is, an NPR news person. He said, "In the nonstop tsunami of global information, librarians provide us with floaties and teach us to swim." So Jane and I are very thankful to be librarians in this age of tsunami weather, and we are thankful to have had the opportunity to tell you about it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Board members, any questions? Mrs. Muefeld?
Thank you very much. I was very glad that you came before us tonight. Can you tell me a little bit more about how the staffing is going? And I don't know if you're prepared to talk about this evening, but, but I know we made some changes a couple of years ago, and.
With the staffing with our library assistants at each of the schools?
Yes. In the elementary? In the elementary school, it's, I'm the one that does the ordering and the overall curriculum development and so forth, but then there is a library aide who is a licensed teacher that's working at each of the school buildings. One aide covers two buildings, with the exception of one, because we have nine. She's half-time at her building.
So how's it going? I think that there's times that we would like, Jenny and I have had conversations where sometimes we'd like to not have turnover, because it's nice to have continuity, but we've been very fortunate to get licensed classroom teachers to fill those positions, and Jenny does an excellent job of training and supporting at all the buildings. And she is in buildings, something that Jane and her didn't mention is how much detail these two ladies spend to the smallest of things, whether it's how something is placed in a library so that it has reader interest, to how the furniture is arranged. I mean, they're, they're very in tune to making reading available to our students. So, yeah, we would, it's been working, and it's been working well due to a lot of hard work and a lot of effort on the part of many people. So, you know, can, would we like for it to be, have a few things different about it? Yeah, we'd like to have more continuity and consistency and keeping it staff, but it still works, and, you know, yeah, it's, yeah, so it's been working for us. We've worked through a lot of those things, and again, it's to a lot of credit for the people that work in buildings every day, whether it's the classroom teachers, or whether it's Jenny or Jane, it's working for that reason. One of the reasons that we have our Library and Media Services, Jenny and Jane are a model of collaboration. They work very closely together, and they see their program as a kindergarten through 12th grade program. They don't look at it as elementary and secondary. And they, with the more expertise we have to support even our elementary schools, it's been beneficial to all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Bowden?
Couple of questions. And this is related to change. Based on your contact with the students in your building, either elementary or middle school, high school, do you see our students reading more, or are they relying more on the technology, the media sources that are out there? You mentioned about the number of books. I'm just wondering, that hard copy that they're actually checking out, has that number changed significantly within the last five to 10 years?
It may be different, elementary to secondary. I'll answer for elementary first. The number of books that kids check out at elementary is still the same. We do also check out NOOCs that we've preloaded books onto, and they, in addition, have, like I said, overdrive. I don't, you know, I don't know if they're actually reading every single one of those after they leave the library, I'm not always sure, but I know that the number of books hasn't gone down. Small kids still need the print books, and they still love the print books, so I really haven't seen that change. How about secondary?
Yeah, in secondary, it's hard to say that much has changed either. I don't want to brag, but I was, I had a very good mentor before me, the librarian that retired, and she stressed to me keeping up to date on the reading and selection of fiction books. And, you know, she gave me clues, topics on, she gave me guidance on other areas of the library, but that was one thing, she always took pride in is that kids were reading so much fiction. And with the new circulation systems that we have, we can see our statistics on what's circulating, how many holds, various things like that. I think all of those have gone up in the years that I've been working because of the model that was set for me. I noticed a huge increase in the number of holds that are placed after I do book talks. But we all, in K through 12, we understand that there's this natural progression that, you know, as an elementary student, they may be checking out a large number of items that are shorter books, you know, sometimes adults are reading to them, sometimes they're reading them, and as they get a little bit older, that number of items that they take at once may decrease. You know, middle school students may only take, you know, one thick chapter book at a time, whereas, you know, some younger kids might take some smaller books. And then we also do notice a little bit of a drop-off in the high school circulation, but we've always attributed that to their busy schedules, their, their higher demand for content reading in the curriculum, things that are required for them, the research projects that they're required to do. So, no, I guess the answer, Mr. Bowden, to your question would be, we don't think we've seen a decline in print reading. In, in the bigger picture, I think it's stayed the same or gone up, and we have seen an increase in the digital reading, eBooks and audiobooks. Our circulation and overdrive kind of reassures us that we made the right decision by investing in that program.
Thank you.
Mrs. Casey?
I'd like to thank you for your report, and I know when I was teaching what an important role you guys have, and I just depended so much on my library media specialist, and if she wasn't there, thank goodness, I had the student Evan, because he knew everything. And I know kids. And I know kids and adults are much more literate in, in technology than we were a few years ago. It's, but anytime you guys want to throw one of those life rafts to the parents, that would be great. I think there's a need for that, but certainly not your job. My one question for you, though, is, you know, have you had any student feedback, especially with the implementation of Destiny? I know it's maybe just coming on a year that we've implemented it, but, you know, have the teachers given you feedback as to how the students are using it, and do they feel that they, you know, are capable and being successful with it?
Specifically with the Destiny program? But as far as the teachers are concerned, it, it works just like Alexandria did, so in that essence, it hasn't changed, it hasn't changed a whole lot for them. For kids, though, what I showed you just real briefly was the main page, so you didn't get to see a whole lot. There's the regular catalog side that looks like our old program, but then there's this other side, like I said, that has a social component to it. That's the side that looks more cool, more social media-like, and at least at the elementary, I'm guessing, secondary too, the kids have been all over that. It, it ebbs and flows, you know, everyone, we show them something, they get all excited, they're all over it for a few weeks, and then it, you know, dwindles. And then we show them a new piece, and they get excited again. But just the fact that they're searching in something that looks familiar to them, looks interesting to them, and it's not just catalog, I think has really been beneficial to us.
At the middle school, when we started teaching the lessons at the beginning of the year and started explaining to the students, many staff would just come sit down, you know, the teachers that brought the classes in, and would do it too, because they can friend each other so they can see recommendations in what other people are reading. And then some of the teachers, even after they watched the kids, you know, run to do it when they had their library time, have actually integrated the Destiny's social networking part of it into book projects, because the kids are able to write book reviews. And so they have other projects where they present in the classroom or do some kind of research project or presentation, but sometimes they have them come in and ask them to write a book review. I have to approve it, or the librarian has to approve it before it goes officially, you know, into the catalog and online, but the teachers like to see them do it. And we encourage them not just to write all positive, you know, fun ones, that if they had a book that they had some critique on, that they could write those in there too.
Well, what a nice example of real-life application, and thanks again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Krung?
Thank you. When we went with the library aides in elementary school a couple of years ago, we transferred a significant amount of the curriculum back to the classrooms that was normally taught in the library. How are we monitoring how that's going and how successful that transfer is?
Honestly, that piece, I think, was part of, was a healthier part. It's now being, it was very different, school to school. Now it's more the same in every, in every school. So for instance, the internet safety, it was very hit and miss before, I think, where now it's, it, the entire curriculum is planned out, K-5. I planned it, and I put lessons and videos and everything on the website for the teachers to access. It is another thing for them to do, but from what I'm hearing, it's going well. And they're the ones that are with the kids to be able to monitor that and get the feedback and hear when things happen day to day, because that's the true learning in something, in a topic like that. The biggest portion of the library curriculum that went to teachers was information literacy skills, it was the using technology, so integration, and it was the research. A lot of that is being done by teachers anyway. It was in the reading curriculum anyway, so that part was really seamless change. That wasn't a difficult change. The, the other parts, the library-specific pieces, are all still happening in the library. So they're there with their classroom, but then they have the prep time of Spanish instead of the library time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bodden?
One other question. You mentioned your vision. What are some things that you would need from the district beyond personnel to make some of these visions happen for you?
Well, do you have one you want to start on? No, I mentioned the one that we were talking about with the computer lab at one of the schools.
The increase of mobile equipment. We've been, there's one of our libraries, for instance, the, the space is really tight for the number of kids, the number of books, the number of shelves, it's just always tight. So we were talking about the need to bring in more flexible equipment, more mobile equipment, so that that lab can go away, get out of my way, so I can put the tables out, make it a more functional space, make it a more inviting space than what it is right now. So really Chromebooks, iPads, whatever it is, and, and tables for the kids to sit at instead of the tables with the, the long skinny tables with the computers on them that are stuck, that can't go to classrooms and can't be used flexibly. So that would be a huge part of it.
And Brian, again, you asked what, besides staffing, the libraries?
Yes, beyond personnel.
Yeah. Well, I think almost every building administrator has been so helpful in making sure that updates as far as how things, you know, work, getting in and out of the library, furniture in the library, shelving in the library, you know, comfortable seating for the kids, has been going well. I just think, to be honest with you, the next one that we should focus on is Longfellow. I think with a new administrator in that building and a new secondary librarian in that building, as I think it was Mary, no, Ann, mentioned before, the librarian in that building, as well as the one at East, will be leaving their positions. And I just think with that transition of both a new administrator and a new librarian, that, I'm not sure who it will come from, but hopefully there will be people reminding them to put that time and effort into seeing what needs to be updated, seeing what needs to be done. I've talked to Beth before about asking to be involved in the hiring process, and then I think she knows too that I would be willing to mentor anybody that's in that position, because it would just, just be someone I'd naturally be collaborating with over time, and it would just be a, a natural, you know, professional development partnership that would develop between me and that other person. And so that's one thing that I'd like to keep in mind for secondary, is the needs of that school and that, that library.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Meyer?
Mrs. Randall, I found that it was more difficult than I wanted to admit to keep track of these answers when we ask what people needed, so that we could have follow-up. So I'm, no doubt you're on top of it.
I am. I got it. I got it. I got it. New staff at the two schools.
If not, these two ladies are.
Yeah.
Well, but, but you know, it's, it's, it's hard to translate the, the good intentions into tangible, now we're going to go do something. So I think you have the right president to do that. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do have one question, and actually two-part. It sounds to me like staff development is coming more from you than it had in the past, from the building library media specialists. Is that inaccurate?
I think that just comes in our preparation for a library media position, is that we're expected to do that. And I think in the past, we just weren't approached all the time. I think they did it in a small way within their own buildings, and now, just because we like working together, and, and nine of them are stuck with me, so it became more global, so it was more noticed.
Okay, so you and Mr. Price then are the primary providers of that.
And I do think it speaks to the fact that as technology, that they have acquired skills to be able to assist and help others, so they, they really are a true liaison between technology and student learning. They're a really good representation of how that can work.
Yeah. Do we measure teacher expertise in technology?
They're taking baby steps in that. Jamie's the better one to answer that.
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. Price is like out of the country, actually, right now. We did talk about having him come in via technology, but he can, he does have some pieces of that. Together, I know for new employees, that he has determined a basic level of expectation for someone that would be hired in the district with technology, so I don't want to speak in that.
Anecdotally, I mean, are you hearing teachers in the buildings saying, you know, that they're feeling more comfortable with technology?
Yeah, I would, I would say so. When you mentioned Jamie Price before, I just also wanted to mention that, like I said, this was his first year we had these positions called Ed Tech Coaches. In addition to librarians, there's a classroom teacher in each of the elementary buildings, and in the high schools, in some cases, there's actually two. Like at Whitman, we have two, East, we have two, I'm not sure how many they have at Longfellow or at West. But they also worked on a survey with Jamie Price and did that as a form to find out strengths and weaknesses and what needed to be worked on. And I think now that they have that, they've, you know, we've begun looking at what needs to be done, what needs to be developed, and that will continue again next year. And then I think there'll be another survey again next year.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was asking, so great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I believe you're done.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on the report? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is business services. The Director of Business Services, John Mack, Manager of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Kulchesky, and Assistant Buildings and Grounds Manager, Melissa Nettisham, are going to present a recommendation to contract for services for duties currently undertaken by members of the Buildings and Grounds Department. The way that this will work is Dr. Earl is going to begin. We will take the presentation, we will have board question and discussion, and then open to community comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. This evening, we bring a recommendation to the school board for, as you mentioned, outsourcing part of our Buildings and Grounds custodial staff. The recommendation is a very difficult recommendation to bring, and the reason it is so difficult, anytime we bring something that has a negative impact on any of our employees, where people lose jobs, it's a significant balancing act of pros and cons in when we bring something to the board. In this situation, while there's a number of specific things we look at and say, with the cost savings that they're going to talk a little bit about, where is that money going to go? To me, really, it's more about, it's a bigger picture of what we're looking at with school funding. From 1993 to 2010, we had a state law that prescribed our increases under the revenue cap. Each year, we knew and we could count on the revenue cap going up by a significant amount, and the amount that we could set our budget and base our budget and our expenditures on. Since 2010, that has been out the door. We now go year to year, based upon what the legislature or the governor decides, or in combination, that our revenue limit's going to increase and the amount of money we're going to have to run our schools. Looking at the bigger picture, we want to make sure we're proactive in preparing for similar situations that we've dealt with in the past, and made difficult decisions on how we meet the budget in the past, when the budget has been reduced by a significant amount of revenues have been reduced. What we want to do is make sure we're in a position where we're not coming to the board in July saying, "We need to cut teaching positions, we need to cut programs." We've had to do that in the past. We've had to recommend additional open enrollment students to fill a budgetary gap. We know it's coming. We know the situation in Wisconsin is volatile with funding for public schools, and it's going to continue, continue that way. There's no indication whatsoever there's been a lot more money, back to where it was pre-ACT-10, of money coming into the schools. With that being said, we've made some significant changes. The board has voted on significant changes already. We've increased for 2014-15, the teacher salary by $1.7 million. That's going to be an amount that will continue to grow as salaries go up, grow up, go up. There's, there's a number of, a number of decisions that, that have to be made. The School Resource Officer Program, we funded that through the Community Service Fund, which is a Fund 80 in the past, that's roughly $300,000. All indications are through the, the acts of the legislature, is DPI has to promulgate rules, and the DPI has shared with us that, and they've shared with it in the past, that we cannot fund SROs or security officers through the 80 Fund, which would shift to the general fund, which would be a hit of $300,000. There's another, another, several areas we're looking at of addressing teacher evaluation, teacher compensation. As we went around and introducing the new compensation model and evaluation model, there was not a meeting that I didn't go to, that teachers expressed concerns that principals are not able to do the amount of work that it takes to do the evaluation, they're tied up with other things and other management tasks. One of the things that I'm looking at recommending to the board would be adding positions where we have people coaching, evaluating, working directly, and giving feedback with teachers in the classroom that people are working with and developing our teachers, as well as principals. We know the research that supports effective principals for greater student learning. While I can point out to a lot of different individual components that we want to look and use that money on, it's really an issue of, of trying to make sure we're prepared for the future as we go down the road. We know the funding is not going to be what it has been in the past, and we want to make sure that when we do have those reduced revenues, that it's not necessarily having a direct impact on class size, on programs, and on the number of teachers that we have in the buildings. With that being said, we look at this recommendation and feel that our quality of service, we can maintain our level of service in the buildings with custodial services. And I know it's often asked of us when we bring a recommendation forward, what else did you consider? I think one of the things we looked at and considered, but are not bringing it forward, is, is the outsourcing of the entire Buildings and Grounds Department, and we didn't feel like that was the best thing for our school district. While I mentioned the outsourcing and the loss of forty positions that would be through a contracted service in the district, again, it's not easy, because there are employees, a number of employees have been here a good number of years. So the decision to bring this forward is not taken lightly. There was a lot of consideration to bring it forward. I know Mr. Mack and Mr. Kulchesky and Ms. Nettisham can share more direct information on the proposal.
Okay, before we begin, we have some people in the hallway here. Would you like to step in? Do we have more chairs in the back? Do you know if there's chairs back there?
There are.
And for other people who are standing, I understand there are chairs back there?
There's standing back there.
Did you care to step in? Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go over the cost information and savings information, and Tom and Melissa are going to go over the changes to the staffing. By outsourcing the forty positions, the net labor savings and benefits is $530,000 approximately. It'll probably be a little bit more than that, and that would take the cost of the positions that we have to outsource versus the salaries and benefits that we're paying. So that, a net number there, $530,000. The supply savings, because the company will use their own supplies, is about $160,000 a year. Overtime savings is about $155,000, because we don't no longer primarily have to cover vacations, sick time, that's all done by the company that we would potentially hire. And then the other big savings comes from the workers' compensation insurance premium, which is about $80,000. And that's how we get annual savings of about $925,000. I would estimate that to be conservative, the 925, and most likely going to be more. There's not much more to it than that, that piece of it, for the, for the cost. So I'm going to, I'm going to go to the next slide here and let Tom and Melissa talk a little bit about the staffing that's here on the left side, the current, and then on the right side, the new structure.
Okay. Thank you. The, on the left, obviously, as Mr. Mack said, is our current structure. On the right side would be the new proposed structure. I'll go item by item, if that's easier. Utility would be what Dr. Earl talked about, we're not eliminate the entire department. We have eight full-time maintenance, two full-time electricians. The proposal is to keep those ten positions. The operations, we have eight full-time operations relief workers, those are your people that do the moves, the grounds area, and then one part-time, twenty-hour week, and that's the mail delivery. The proposal is to keep those positions. The change really comes in the custodial, the cleaning of the buildings. First item, four time, four full-time building supervisors, the proposal is to keep a supervisor, and those supervisors are at each secondary school. The next one is for full-time custodial three. What that really is, is a, an E- What that really is, is a, an evening supervisor. Proposal is to keep that at the secondary schools. So really and essentially in the secondary school, the proposal is a district person during the day, district person the second shift. The next one is where the change is start. Currently, we have nine full-time head custodians. The proposal changes that head custodians, really building engineers. We'd have three full-time where each engineer would be in charge of three buildings. They wouldn't be in charge of the cleaning, they wouldn't be doing the cleaning, they wouldn't be doing the setups. Be more preventative maintenance, handling requests from the principals and such. Then the actual cleaning itself, that currently we have the 10 full-time custodial two. Those are evening custodians at the 10 elementaries. That would be all to outsourcing. The next is 15 full-time custodial ones. Those are custodians between the four secondary schools. That would be outsourcing. Next item is four full-time building, school building cleaners. Those are at the secondary schools also, one at each secondary, secondary school, and that would be outsourced. The second, the last one is the five part-time school building aides, and that would go to outsourcing also. So really, it brings you down, currently, we have 64 full-time employees, six part-time. Give you a total of 67 full-time equivalents. The proposal is 29 full-time employees, one part-time employee does the mail delivery for the, and then that's 29 and a half full-time equivalents. And the, the formula we use would be the contractor with 44 and a half full-time equivalents contracted. With that, we wanted to give you the general structure. And then I'm sure the board will have questions. We'll be very happy to answer those.
Thank you.
One of the other things I just, if I can mention, we talk about outsourcing and sometimes the concept of outsourcing, it just seems cold that as a school district, we're just going to outsource, and it's a hands-off. When you look at the relationships with companies that, that you end up working with, when they're not successful, and we've talked, I've talked to some actually superintendents in situations where it hasn't been successful, and it's really because it has not been a partnership in one district in particular, and laying out expectations early on. This isn't, this isn't the first time we've looked at something like this. The food service program, if you, if you look at D and Sedexo, it is a true partnership. And we talk about the responsiveness of Sedexo there. Over time, over the past six, seven years, I'm not even sure how long we've been with them, but not only has the quality dramatically increased, but our relationship with them continues to grow, and their responsiveness is, is outstanding. We're currently going through the bid process with that, but I think there's an example. Our print shop is another situation where we outsourced our print shop to Xerox and reduced our costs, and the quality has gone up dramatically in that area as well. So we have people that have experience. I know Tom and Melissa both have experience working in situations with contracted employers. Myself, as a principal, worked in, in a situation with contracted custodians as well. So there is experience behind this, behind this recommendation.
Thank you. Could the board get a copy of that? We've gotten all that information, but not in that great structured. So if, if we could get that at some point in time, that would be great. So I will open it to questions or comments from board members, please. Mrs. Steve?
Thank you. I'll start with just one. I think we all probably have several concerns, but my main one is security. I understand that part of the reason to do this is to maintain security in the secondary schools with the school resource officers. But what is the plan to make, make sure that the people who are coming into the building as contractors are going to be the people, the kind of people that we want to have in our buildings?
Sure. Absolutely, and that's something that we've talked long and hard. Well, right now, we just sent out the RFP. It's available on their Buildings and Grounds website on the district, and we highlighted many items on that. Now, when you go a proposal for something like this, you can always go out with some districts done. I've talked to them around here. It's bottom price, you know, the bottom price. We really broke it down into five different items, price being one of those. But two of the others is, one of the real one I'll talk about when you talk about security, we put an area in there called proof of responsibility. We're asking those questions to all the contractors. And when we do this bid, when we do it like a roof opening bid, it's very simple. You send everyone's numbers, you just compare numbers. It's a roof, it's not that exciting. We do something like this, it's much more involved. We're asking for proposals, we'll read those proposals aloud, and then we're going to follow up with interviews. And highlights we're looking for on those according with security is, you know, how do you do your background checks? And we'll compare them with ours. We put in there, when you have a background, every employee, the contractor that steps foot in our district, they must turn in a completed background check to our human resource department and okay through that. So that's very similar to our, our security now. Then we ask also, a big is, what is your training on security and safety? How, what do you do in other districts? For example, locking up, locking up a building, are you comfortable with that? And we're, then part of this is references, we follow up with those. We, honestly, we've started Friday afternoon contacting other districts and knowing, you know, finding out who the good companies are, what do they do for security? But that's a big part of that interview process, we sit with them, and that's something we're just absolutely drilling their head because we're not going to accept, we're not going to bring proposal to the board if we're not comfortable in that security and what their answers are. Does that, does that help answer your question?
It helps. It doesn't answer everything, but it helps. And so if I could just help to get the process straight in my head, we're having a presentation today. This will come back before us for a vote. And then would there be another recommendation to the board for the contracting company? Or will it not come back before us?
We would hope that we'd have the recommendation for the contract at the next meeting. If we can't get it by then, we may wait until a special meeting or the first meeting in June.
So you are anticipating one board action then, to approve?
Correct.
Outsourcing with a named contractor?
The, the action we would ask would be to approve a contract with a...
We're, we're on track with our RFP. It's very, it's aggressive, but typically, when you're going through like this, you don't have, it'd be nice to have three months and let every contractor tour every building 10 times. That's not the case. And we're doing tours this week, and then bids next week, and interviews next week, and reference checks and stuff.
Okay. Thank you. I will certainly look at the RFP, and if I, I'll follow up with any questions if I have any after that. Thank you.
Mrs. Casey?
I just want to know, like, as a parent, you know, the schools are utilized very much after school for a number of activities and special events, and, you know, how's that landscape going to look, and is that going to change at all?
Similar it is now, the RFP we ask for, we use an elementary as your example. The contractor provide a daytime custodian and then a nighttime, the nighttime major part of their job, which is now is that tear-ups, or on tear-downs, setups, along with cleaning classrooms, letting people in. And that's what we put in the design to have the elementary engineer become, to work with the building. And that's, their job is not only preventative maintenance, but the communication part, communication with the rec department scheduling, what's scheduled in a building, communication with the principal, communication with teachers, and then communicating that to the night custodians or doing it themselves.
So you don't foresee that being impacted at all?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Mrs. Muehlfield?
Yes, thank you. I had the pleasure of talking to several community members over the weekend since the information went out. And some of the questions that I have, and, and I think they're good ones, are the actual staff in the buildings do much more than just cleaning? And... And some are also very involved with the State Safe Roads for Schools initiative. How do you plan to make sure that those duties are covered and, and that continuity is there for the children?
Sure. I think part of the plan, we're different than other districts. We alluded to, esp, you know, we talked in the secondary schools. A lot of districts are doing it, outsourcing. They're not keeping a full-time custodian during, or building supervisor during the day, and particularly not the night one because there's, I mean, it's, the amount of events at a secondary school in the evening, it's amazing in how they change. And so that's why we're keeping that. Now, particularly your answer to the Safe Roads for Schools, my understanding that custodians, they do the, the setups for the, the hug-and-gos, other things like that. That would be part of the duties of that contracted person there during the day. And the, there is those two people, you know, in elementary school right now, we have two employees, daytime, nighttime, that, you know, they do other things. In this plan, we have two employees there, and we realize there's, you know, the... I'm going to answer a question a little bit. Part of it is consistency, absolutely. And that's something we're really looking for in the RFP. There is, there's companies out there that every, every two weeks, you have a new employee. Part of our RFP is that, go through turnover. That's a big, you know, I talked to a school district today that has, that's had contracted clean for three years, and they said they think they've turned over two employees possibly out of their eight buildings in the three years. So that's something we're really looking at, so consistency that we have now. To do those extra things, like the Safe Roads for Schools, to do that, the principal or secretary has something they need done every day. That's really important to us, managing this to make sure it goes smoothly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowden?
You mentioned several times a lot of districts, and I'm just wondering, and you're checking, how many districts are currently outsourcing within our area?
Sure. In our area, I would, I would definitely say the outsourcing, I'll answer that indirectly than directly. Outsourcing custodial in school district is extremely commonplace in other parts of the states. For examples, like the Green Bay area, the Fox Valley area, the, the west side of the state. It's starting to become much more commonplace in the Milwaukee area. And I believe in the next five years, it's going to be the norm in most school districts in the Milwaukee area. Other districts I've talked to, particularly today, Kettle Moraine School District, the New Berlin School District, and the McQuantheensville School District.
A follow-up?
Just a follow-up regarding the three full-time head custodians. How do you see their day structured? Since the elementary buildings are, you know, you could have a student that throws up in a classroom, and then they got to do a setup in the gym because there's a Christmas program or a bat, whatever. How do you see their, their day or their week? You know, their structure of those three?
You know, the, the head custodians may be a bad term. Maybe a building engineer is a better term for those. We go with your example, the throw up in the classroom, that's a contractor. We have a cleaner in the school, they're on call to be able to do that. The three, the district, three full-time engineers focus on preventative maintenance. Their structure of the day would be communication, like with the rec department that does the scheduling, with the office, to communicate with the cleaners that are in those buildings every day. It could be, it could be a day where they're at all three of their buildings for, for a few hours. It could be their structure where they have a project, specific project they want to get done and work eight hours in that one building. But I see those three positions as very communicated positions. They're, you know, they get to know the three principals that they work with. They get to know how to communicate with their, the contracted cleaners in their buildings. And particularly, you know, the, the lunchroom setups, the, the puke cleanups, the setups for Christmas concerts, that will be on the, the contracted cleaning service. And also, talk about setups. One part of this, we have eight operations relief workers. Right now, those operations relief workers, their primary job is to sub for custodians. That's a big relief because they're not going to be subbing for custodians anymore because we, we don't have the custodians. So if you have, and the Christmas time's a great example. We'll have, right now, Christmas concerts. It takes, you only have a half hour to set it up, and it takes four people. And now, we have those eight operations relief workers dedicated to doing things like that. So if you're a buildings and head engineer, we will, in elementary school, and you have a Christmas concert, you have 20 minutes to set up, you, part of your job is to communicate, not only with your custodians of that building, maybe they're sweeping up lunch and you need to set up right afterwards, but to work with Melissa and our operations relief worker staff to have those individuals be, help you set it up right away.
I have one other follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead.
The first question I had. Kettle Moraine, New Berlin, and McQuanago, have you had contact with these? McQuan, I'm sorry. Have you had contact with these districts?
Yes, sir.
And how long have they currently had or made use of this outsourcing?
McQuan, New Berlin, around three years. Kettle Moraine, we, we didn't get into, we got sidetracked in our conversation. I believe about the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Right now. Yes, Mrs. Casey?
I don't know if this is something that would be, you know, typical, so this is just a question I have. If, you know, when you're developing a contract with them, would the district be able to have something, like say, access to the background checks? And would the company or the district provide special training for these people to work in schools? And then lastly, could you talk a little bit about the process of how it would work if this person wasn't working out in a building?
Sure. First, on the access to background check, we're requiring that every employee before they enter our building, they submit one with our human resource department. So we have them, we have them there. The next one, the training in schools, one of our five criteria points is one is school familiarity. Because there is, there are some companies that would love to do this, but working in schools is much different than cleaning an office building. And so that's something we definitely take in consideration. The, the last part was, I can't remember.
If one of the, was it working?
Sure, it wasn't working out. That's one of the things with contracted cleaning services. We have a, a cleaner. It's as simple as us telling the contractor, "It's not working out. You need to re, you need to find someone different to do that."
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
I'll share with you some of the things that are going through my mind. January 31st, 1990, I was laid off and walked out the door. I found the job on May 30th, 1990. Those were a long four months without work. So I have direct experience and empathy for this, the people involved in this conversation. I believe that good and capable and people do an honorable job right now in our schools. And if you all who are proposing this do your job, if we approve this, that good and capable and honorable people will be working in our schools in the future. I've always been very proud that, of being on a school board of a school district where we were, we are, maybe were, an employer who provided jobs for the people who served our children. There are a lot of things happening now with public school funding that are not helping us. And that is a, in my mind, another tragedy, the, the attack on public schools that's been going on. We don't, as a board, take many votes that change the paradigm by $900,000 to $1 million a year. That's an important paradigm change to enable us to take care of other things. And when, if we approve this proposal, we then won't be the school district we were that provides those, that culture for the wall with us, the community, and for our kids, and for our employees. We won't be a bad culture, but we won't be what we were. And so my final thought is that I'm, I'm not sure if, if this is changing times or this is somebody's choice at higher levels of government that we're in this spot. I don't know. I'll leave that to the rest of you to decide whether it's changing times and things have to be more efficient, quote unquote, meaning they cost less, not necessarily better. Or whether this is somebody's choice somewhere else who decides how much funding public schools get. I, I don't really know which is which. Maybe it's both. Either way, as a school board member, I have to vote based on the facts over which I have control or over which the school district has direct control. And so that's, those are the considerations in my mind. I'm assuming we'll have a vote at the next meeting. I'm leaning towards voting yes. But it's, it's not a certainty what I'll do. As I said, I explained the things going through my mind. As I said, I explained the things going through my mind in this regard. So thank you.
Thank you. Other board members?
And again, I have a brief question, probably for Mr. Mayock. Dr. Erdl touched briefly on Act 20, which is the legislation that does not allow us any longer to use our community service fund for specific items. They, they have made rules, correct?
They're in the process of making the rules.
Okay. And I know that you're, you're talking with people there because there's nothing documented, you know, other than the existing rules and the fact that we are already paying for our SROs out of that fund, as well as other districts. What, what is the certainty of that option going away?
Every indication that I've heard any conversations about that, that school resource officers cannot be paid out of Fund 80 or the community service fund.
I can also share that I had an email interaction with Senator Voekmeyer, who was involved in that legislation, and explained the situation that we're in and that we really should be allowed to use the 80 fund for SROs. And her response back to me was quite simply, find a different way to fund it. So I think Mr. Meyer commented on, you know, the times that, that we're facing. And I, and I understand that point of view of saying, find a different way to fund it. That was the intent of taking, some districts were abusing the 80 fund. They were putting a lot of different things in there and the intent was to stop that. As far as I know, that was the intent. We are not a district that has done that. We use, it's mainly for our rec department and community resource officers. So I think pretty, you know, you can't put odds on it, but I think it's pretty clear that they do not want us using that.
So are you preparing a budget for us that will have the SROs funded out of the general fund?
I didn't move them yet, but I most likely will. I was kind of waiting for them to make their final decision, but I mean, at this point in time, that's what I'm thinking is going to happen. I think the biggest thing, what you've had is, DPI has always taken a stand, really that you cannot do it. They had no power to enforce the rule. I think with this new legislative change, what, what has happened is now they do have the power to enforce it. So what they'll do is if you pay them out of Fund 80, they're just going to reduce your revenue cap in the following year by the amount that you use, as if you paid them out of Fund 10.
Okay.
And that's the way they're going to go about.
Okay.
Forcing it.
Okay, so we don't have a choice?
Basically, no.
Yeah, okay. And I, the other thing I would like to talk about is safety. That was the gist of most of the communications that I had and it was also my initial reaction when we spoke about this the first time. And unfortunately, you know, we have SROs who provide a safe environment and, you know, positive reinforcement for our students. And this is also a safety issue and you're aware of that. You've shared that you're aware of that. And I, you know, I don't know how we got to this place in our state where we have to trade off, save things for, and you know, our district has done a lot of work on the safety issue recently. So it is really difficult. It's really hard. You know, I, I hope that you are able to create that RFP and find that company, but, you know, at what cost? So, like Mr. Meyer, I, you know, I haven't been laid off from a job, but I do have serious concerns about the kids in our building. And I, and again, I'm not preaching to you, I, it's very clear that you're aware of that.
Mr. Meyer?
I, I want to emphasize my opinion that if, if you three and the superintendent do your jobs with how you would implement this, there won't be a safety issue. Good and honorable people work, it's, are available at those firms and it can be done. I frequently work late at night with contract cleaners walking through and their mothers and their grandmothers and, and from time to time, another crew comes in and cleans the floors and I don't know them, I don't talk with, I don't have opportunity to talk with them. So there's some things, some homework you will have to do. I do think it matters that the people who care for our buildings have a long-term employee, employment commitment to the culture of the district. And to preserve that, we have to forego $925,000 a year. That's my choice.
Thanks. Anybody else?
We'll open it to public comment now. I'll just remind everybody to please keep your comments to three minutes. Dr. Erdl has already started a document, questions and answers that he will be publishing to the community. And we will be adding any questions that you have tonight. So feel free to please share your comments and your questions will be recorded and answered on later date. If, if that's not satisfactory, if there's something you really need to speak to somebody about, please call Dr. Erdl. So if you would like to make a comment, please step up to the microphone.
My name's Catherine Wilkes, I'm a fifth grade teacher at Eisenhower Elementary School. Mrs. Fee talked about the security at our elementary schools. These people, our custodians, are the people who make our children feel safe. Mrs. Stacy talked about the evening events at our elementary school. This is important to keep in mind, that there will be a person who knows and cares about the kids. Have you looked at the turnover as an issue that a contracted company may have? We don't want this to be an issue, as Mr. Meyer talked about. Mrs. Mielfeld mentioned, many do more than just clean. We have honored numerous buildings and grounds employees over the years, specifically one at East just last week. As a friend of it, these people are a vital part of our daily workdays for both students, staffs, and parents. Just because these other districts are making this decision, does that mean that we need to make that same decision too?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Schmidt and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. And so some of us, some of the staff, we were just talking about this today and a few interesting things came up. So, and a lot of them we've, you all have brought up, so that's, that's good. But I'd like to read the list of things that just came up as far as the cleaners that'll be hired. It sounds like those cleaners are really the, it's the same job that is the current custodial positions right now. So some of the issues that came up would be, would those cleaners know what to do, say if a false alarm came up, you know, a fire alarm, those sorts of things happen? Fire drills, tornado drills, heating and cooling issues, like in the older buildings, it's, it's crazy, but all of a sudden, our, our room can change like by, you know, 50 degrees and, you know, within 20 minutes and we need help with that. And our custodians are there right away. Let's see, playground equipment maintenance, something breaks, our custodians fix it. Ice, if it's snow season, putting the salt, just that kind of stuff. Those are just, they seem, you know, like common, obvious things, but are those cleaners in charge of that also? And none. Security, like, well, we talked about that, opening the doors, locking them, classroom accidents, as a kindergarten teacher, you have to know, it's a pretty common situation that we call for assistance in cleanup. And even like around the building, for some reason, dog droppings, it's a big issue and our custodian, they, every single day, that's part of his job, he goes and picks it up. Because otherwise it would end up in the, in the classroom anyway, or in the building. Is that going to be part of the new cleaner's responsibility? Flu season, lice, scabies, that kind of thing. There's always extra cleanup when those happen in, in our classrooms. So is that also going to be part of the new clean, janitorial services job? And then the events, the setup for all the different things. That was a big concern, or just, we were wondering how that was gonna, gonna look. You know, and just the, I don't know what to say, except that they really are part of our family, our custodians, they're, you know, they help us do our job and they know those kids so well. You know, that's something that, you know, I'll miss that a lot. And, you know, a lot of teachers, we come in at like seven or eight after our kids go to bed or families and it works for us. The custodians let us in, you know, Louis will make sure that, you know, he's there to open the door if, you know, the alarm, the badges aren't working, that kind of thing. Will the new cleaners be, you know, available for that sort of thing? So those are some concerns and just things that we brought up today, just wondering how that's going to look. So we appreciate any clarification as it comes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Denny Klinkworth. I'm speaking to you not only as a first grade teacher from McKinley, but also as a community member. I live in the Roosevelt School District. So I'm kind of coming as twofold then. I just want to talk to you about how I've kind of felt as this has come about. As a teacher in the district and as a community member, I understand the importance of providing great instruction, the need of funds to do so, and I appreciate that this district always strives to continually improve the educational environment for our students. It is for this very reason that I believe the custodial staff should not be outsourced. We've talked a lot about cleaning and setup and breakdown, but they're more than that. They play an integral and invaluable part of the educational environment for our staff, students, and community to be able to thrive. And I'm not talking about cleaning buildings. While I know that the board and the administration recognize this fact, I feel the need that I needed to provide a teacher perspective of how much they actually need to meet and how much they support me in my job on a daily basis. I have been at this district for seven years, working as a staff member and a teacher, two years as observatory teacher and student teacher, and three years working for Wawa Tosa daycare at various school buildings. In that time, I've managed to work at seven different schools. In each experience, the custodial staff played a vital part of my everyday experience. From making sure they said hi to me when I walked in the building and I was a safe person to be there, to fixing things, to helping set up, to little daily things that actually do support my instruction. At McKinley, the custodial staff really does allow me to be a better teacher. Their efforts indirectly affect my instruction. I like to say there are three kinds of teachers, the early bird, the late nighter, and the take it homer. I have become a late nighter. I stay at school almost every night after hours because it's when I get stuff done and it's when I work the hardest. And it's at a place that I get stuff done. If I take stuff home, it doesn't get done. This started really truly because in my first year teaching at McKinley, there were some pretty late nights where I was shutting the building down, saying, can I stay for one half hour more, please, please, please? And I got accommodated. And each of those nights, my night custodian, not out of me asking, would stand by a window and watch me walk to my car in the dark. And from that moment on, let me get choked up about that because it's important to me. From that moment on, I have felt comfortable working at school till dark. And in those late nights, I worked to improve and provide quality instruction to my students. But this support of the custodial staff happens in a daily basis in the little things I do. And last Thursday was a great example. Kurt Stanley.
Wave, Mr. Kurt.
He came to my room with my unit four science kits, saying, I watched your unit three kits go and I kind of thought you might need these soon. I hadn't asked for them, yet, but I was starting the unit in the next week sometime. Kurt just saved me a valuable time. No need to email, no need to wait for those kits to be there. When I was ready to start planning, they were there. I'd like to believe that I used that extra time, those extra minutes he saved me, to improve my daily teaching in another way, to check off that list that never seems to stop. And while this is one small example, it happens every day, every week throughout the entire school year. And I'd like to think that that adds up to a lot of hours and a lot of minutes that really does change the instruction of my students and the learning of my students. I don't think I'm alone. Stand up, please, if you've had a custodian, some time in your vote, it was a meaningful and meaningful idea. These people are here because they do more than clean buildings. They support us every single day. The Friends of Education Award is also proof of that. For the last 30 years, almost every year, some member of a custodial staff has been a recipient. And as you said today, quoted, it's because of their contribution to the education of students. These custodial recipients, one of which you announced earlier this evening, are not rewarded because of their maintenance of buildings. They are not remembered and visited by alumni students because the students remember the cleanliness of their classrooms. They are recipients because of their dedication, their pride in their school, and their overall impact of the educational environment at our schools. It is my understanding that your vote tonight will affect the position of the custodial staff member that was just recognized as a friend of education just last week. While I've only provided a glimpse of what these people do for me, and probably lots of people in this room, I really hope you consider my comments and how we all really feel, how much they play a part in our school communities, much more than cleaning buildings, much more than setting up and tearing down, and to be honest, even more than security. So I hope you take those comments into consideration as you decide tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just remind everybody that we do try to stay with our three-minute?
Sorry.
Comment, no, yeah, I'm just, it's a reminder, this is a really difficult thing. It's a really hard thing, so, but we do try to do that.
Thank you. And thank you guys for giving this serious debate. And I can tell on the board that you guys are listening and we really very much appreciate that and appreciate the work you guys do. And it was Mr. Meyer who had said that we are dealing with good, capable, honorable people who serve our children.
Excuse me? Can I get your?
Sorry, my name is Allison Byrne.
Thank you. And your address, please?
2368 North 91st Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I was saying, Mr. Meyer had said earlier that we have good, capable, honorable people who serve our children. And we may continue to do so, but good, capable, honorable people who serve our children deserve a living wage job. And we will get nice people if we pay them $10 to $12 an hour forever, for dead-end jobs with no benefits and no hope for, for integration to the schools in a deeper level. And as a mother, I feel that having jobs at this pay grade will affect the safety of my children. I have three children at McKinley Elementary School. Mr. Stanley has interacted daily with every one of them and my children know him and appreciate him. Several times we referred to cleaning of the buildings. Even by the staff up here, they said, we will have these buildings be as clean. And I think that so often, it is touched upon how, what a small part of the job it is. I mean, and we will hear more teachers and more parents who are touched by the different aspects of the custodial staff, but it, again, this is so much more than the outsourcing of cleaning. I think that Wawa Tosa and the education of Wawa Tosa affects our children both academically and socially. And my children will remember how this gets voted. And my children will remember if we once had a custodial staff, but we chose, we didn't value them enough to pay them a living wage job. And we have the McKinley message at McKinley. And we talk about how we treat others and how we value others. And I think that goes beyond the classroom sometimes and it goes to our school board and it goes to our professionals and we are seeing how we value this job. And our children will remember how we decide this. So thank you so much for your deliberation and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alan Nichols. I live at 7926 Gridley Avenue. And so I'm a member of the Wawa Tosa community and I'm also an activist in an organization here locally called Grassroots Tosa and I'm here to speak on their behalf tonight. I'm here to speak on their behalf tonight. One sort of practical point that I'd like to raise, it's my understanding, and this is, I guess I would call it partial information, that the immediate issue here tonight is there's been about a $300,000 hole that's appeared in the budget. You'd like to fund the special resource officers, but that route has been declared off limits by the Department of Public Instruction pursuant to Act 20. Would it be possible to fund the $300,000 for these officers? I'm sort of assuming that right now, this $300,000 goes to the Police Department in return for the officers. Seems to me like it might be possible, rather than taking the $300,000 out of the school board budget and having to mollify the Department of Public Instruction, and ultimately Leah Vukmir and the people that she runs with, to instead simply have the Police Department pay the salaries of $300,000. Either way, the taxpayers of Wawatosa are on the hook for the same $300,000, whether it comes to the school board or the Police Department. But at least if you were able to do that, you would be able to have the school resource officers in place in the buildings, and you would also prevent throwing the custodians overboard. Because, look, guys, what you said in your initial remarks was absolutely true. It's gonna be $300,000 this time. You'll find a way to get past it. If you go and outsource those jobs, it'll be good until the next problem comes along. And then you'll have to do it all over again, and it'll be a death by a thousand cuts. All right? Because that's the political environment that we're living in these days. That's, that is what we're up against. There's a crisis that we're facing here tonight because they have put the community of Wawatosa and the seven of you who we've elected to make these tough decisions, they've put you in this position and they say, okay, now you have to figure out what to do. And somebody calls Leah Vukmir, and Leah Vukmir says, hey, it's not my problem. You figure out what you have to do to meet my standards. Well, their standards in Act 20, it's my understanding includes, I think it's $4,000 or $8,000 tax write-off for a student that is gonna go to a private K-8, and it's gonna be $10,000 for a student that's going to a private high school. They're willing to write that off. That is their funding priorities, and they're putting you guys and they're putting us behind the eight ball. So the last thing that I'll have to say about this is I would urge you to very strongly rethink before you go further with the decision of outsourcing the custodial staff. Because if you make that decision, you're gonna be facing the same problem within a year or two years. The situation is only gonna get worse. It's not gonna get better. The real solution that we've got is gonna come in November. And that's when we have to start thinking about getting rid of Leah Vukmir and getting rid of Hutton and getting rid of Kuyanga and ultimately getting rid of Scott Walker. That's the only daylight at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, I'd like to correct something. The term rethink, there has not been a decision made. And administration has a responsibility to bring this recommendation to the board. It's a million-dollar annual decision, 925,000, maybe more, every year, $900,000. Administration can't make this decision without bringing it to the board. So the fact that there is a proposal here means the management is doing their job. And so, and there has not been a decision by the board. And we are seriously listening, I'm sure, everyone.
Thank you.
My name's Karen Lanko. My husband Sean is a custodian at Lincoln Elementary, been with the district for 23 years.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we get your address, please?
One forty-two thirty Milldale Street, Brookfield, Wisconsin, five three oh five.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess I have some questions. I mean, first of all, has anyone thought about offering them concessions? Yeah, they've taken concessions? How about a decrease in pay? How about giving up some of the sick time? Anyone table any of that to create some of the dollars? If you're losing 40 people, you could seriously, if you do the math, and it's basic math, there's money that would be dollars and cents and could help even things out. Being with the district for 23 years, if you've gone through buildings and grounds with Jerry Krieger, and we have Melissa and, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you. He's been an ORW, he's been a custodian, he has had custodian right now. Why is it that the top people are the ones that are getting ousted and the ones that are new hires are being kept? I mean, if you're talking knowledge, you're talking experience, you're talking people who care. My husband came to the building on Easter, so it disrupted our Easter because there was a problem in the building. And I know he was texting Melissa because I actually went with him, figuring, I'm not gonna sit home without my husband, without my family on Easter, because he eats, sleeps, breathes his school. He, his principal was generous enough to give him an iPad. You know what? He goes to work, he leaves by five o'clock, five fifteen in the morning, he comes home by, let's say, two thirty, three o'clock. He's on that stinking iPad until eight o'clock at night, doing emails, work requests, whatever he needs to do. So it's not just an eight-hour job. He's there and constantly at home. So thank God for the iPad, because otherwise my kids wouldn't have computer time to get their homework done. He lives, sleeps, breathes. He's made friends. He actually, on occasion, has gone into the classroom or the gym and played with the children. Hey, Mr. Sean. Hi, Mr. Sean. They waved to him in the stores. There's a relationship there. You're going to destroy this, and why are you not allowing these people to go into the permanent positions that you're keeping with the knowledge and experience and the people who care the most? For the kids.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Pettit. I'm a senior kindergarten teacher at Roosevelt. I've been a faculty member since 2008. Actually, worked at the Lutheran Home before I started teaching, and I would take my class to the, my three-year-olds to the playground, and I would daydream about being a real teacher someday. And then, lo and behold, in 2010, I got hired at Roosevelt. Or 2008, sorry. I moved to TOSA in 2010 because I wanted my kids to go here. Like, my oldest goes to McKinley now. There's been a lot of changes since 2008. It's a lot of tough changes for everybody. And I've really tried to stick by everything that the district has done because I believe that, you know, we're doing what's best for kids, what's best for educators. I sat with you at the recent listening session, at their four teachers and five board members. And I left that meeting feeling really good, like, you know, they're really listening. I think they're starting to get it, because it's been crazy the last few years, and, you know, I think that the culture's gonna change. And then the email came. And, you know, it's been hard to stay positive, especially since Act 10. I struggle daily with being positive, because I'm there for the kids. I guess this decision is kind of making us like all those other districts, and I was hoping that we were different. So it just makes me really sad. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder to provide your name and address, please?
Hi, my name's Steve Domrath. I'm the head custodian at Underwood Elementary School.
Can we get your address?
Sure. Twenty-three forty South Fifty-fifth, West Dallas.
Thank you.
I'm currently the head custodian at Underwood Elementary School. I started off at Fisher part-time, moved to Jefferson, McKinley, East, and now Underwood. For 22 years, people have asked me, where you work, like most people do, and I would say, the Wawatosa School District. But you know, when I said that, my chest kind of swelled, kind of like a father talking about his son's homerun ball or the game-winning catch. Because I'm proud to be an employee here. Twenty-two years, I've been through a divorce. I've been through a marriage. I've had children. I've lost my father. I've had the death of my oldest son. All of that's shared with both of my families, my Underwood family and my family at home. We're not cleaners. We're not just cleaners. We're more than that. The Wawatosa School District is probably one of the best school districts in the nation, not because we have more iPads, not because we have more computers, not because we have astroturf, not because we have lighted baseball fields. It's because of the people. The people are what made this school district great. And I think you really tear out the fabric of the greatness. We are part of the history. We are part of the success. And it's disheartening. And I know budgets are important, but you can't place a dollar amount on pride. And you can't place the dollar amount on consistency, commitment, dedication, and honor. There's no background checks or blood tests for character. That can only be discovered with time and history. And I have 22 years, and I have a lot of history here. I have an outstanding attendance record. I have excellent and outstanding personal reviews for 22 years. I brought four of them, if you would care to look at those. And I was replaced by people with less than two years. No experience in pools, no experience in boilers, no experience with the children. It's sad. It's, you're not taking only my job away, you're taking a part of me away. And I think in return, taking a part of the TOSA School District away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lisa Malio, thirteen twenty-one North Sixtieth. I want to talk about that pride. I've been at my company for 22 years. I've never called in sick. I take pride in that, and I do not believe, I'm guessing maybe, if we outsource this, that we are gonna get the same kind of pride in our schools. Dr. Erdl, in his tenure here, I've heard over and over again that we have old buildings we need to maintain them. We do have old buildings, and we need to maintain them. But it's more than that. I can call Mr. Mark at any given time at Washington Elementary, within five minutes, ask him to open a door for me, ask him to help me haul something in, because I have eight volunteer jobs at that school and I work. I can call at Longfellow for the same thing. When my daughter possibly had whooping cough at East High School, I didn't call Mr. Hughes and ask him what he was doing about it. I called the custodian, head custodian, because that's the kind of parent I am, and I asked him how he was providing extra cleaning in the classroom that my daughter was in because she possibly had whooping cough. You're not gonna replace that with someone who is not getting a pension, is not vested in our community, does not say our community. It won't happen. I'm guessing, but I don't think it will. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for helping our buildings. I also want to give you one more example. We had a custodian that was kind of out the door, retiring, did his job. I told him for probably about three years, because I garden at Washington, that our building was falling apart and nothing was done. Mr. Mark comes and within three weeks, guess what? The facade of our building was getting fixed and re-cemented because he actually took pride and listened to what I had to say, and he took care of it because he cared about our building. I don't think you're going to get this, I'm just guessing, with somebody who's not vested in our community schools. And we also have to worry about the safety of our kids, because I think that that is something that we're all concerned about. We're going with this new system to check everybody in, and I don't think somebody who is not employed by the district is going to spell safety for our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Meg Malloy. I live at twenty-four twenty North Ninety-fourth Street. I have two children at McKinley School, and I'm a teacher in Shorewood. At one point, when I worked in Shorewood, we did outsource our custodians, which we no longer do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Suarez-Flint. Two-six-three-nine North Eighty-sixth Street, and I'm standing here because my daughters told me I had to. I have two daughters at McKinley, and Mr. Kurt, they love you. And it's gonna be hard. I like to think that we live in a community and a school district that cares about its children, our neighbors, rewards hard work, and honors dedication. But let's be honest, somebody stands to make a lot of money off this vote, and it's certainly not the 40 families who are about to suffer. I find it insulting when we use the words "saving money" when we describe such a proposal. This decision, outsourcing in general, does not save money. It devastates 40 families. This is not saving. If I want to save money this week, should I not feed my children dinner? Like, that's not saving money. If we want to save money, Superintendent Erdl, if we cut your salary $100,000, is that saving money? No, that's ridiculous and insulting. It's not saving money. So when we discuss this in the future, can we not use those terms? Because it's gross. I just am appalled by that. I just want to relate what happened as I was leaving the house. My daughter Kate, a kindergartner at McKinley, she says, Mom, why do you have to go to the school board meeting? And I said, well, Kate, people want to get rid of the custodians at your school. And she said, but Mama, Mr. Kurt does such a good job. Why would anyone want to get rid of him? And I replied, because they want to get someone cheaper. And my second grader, who's smart, says, that's wrong. And she's right. That is wrong. Kate then says, Mama, we're taught to make good choices in school. That's not a good choice. We teach our children that if you work hard and do a good job, you will get rewarded. I also teach them that money is never more important than people. I believe no matter how gray a situation may be, at some level, there is a basic right and wrong. Laying off 40 dedicated workers, some of which may be hired back at possibly a minimum wage so some company can make a profit, is wrong. Outsourcing is a slippery slope. Once you decide money is more important than people, where do you go from there? Are we ready to run our schools like a corporation? And are you ready to explain to my daughter Kate that money is more important than Mr. Kurt? I urge you to make a good choice.
Thank you.
My name is Harper Martin. I'm a teacher and a resident here. My address is eighty-two thirty-one Stickney. I believe that we are the stories we perpetuate. And I think that Wawatosa is in a unique position to be proactive and... And I think that Wauwatosa is in a unique position to be proactive and take this opportunity to determine who we are as a district. And I think that we have to consider the community that we serve. The identity of the community that we serve is homegrown. Our community values local business. We don't support big boxes as much as we do local upstarts. When we have celebrations at schools, they are supported by the PTSA, and they're home-baked. When I moved here, oh, about 15 years ago, it was because I didn't understand that when I started dating somebody from Wauwatosa, that I would be spending the rest of my life in Wauwatosa. People who grew up in Wauwatosa stay in Wauwatosa. And that's important to the people who grow up here and stay here. I think that we have an opportunity to make choices based on our identity. And I think our identity is based on the values of our community. The values in our community are that we're local, we support local efforts. I was talking, as many of the teachers were, with my coworkers about things that you learn from custodians that you don't learn from anyone else. The first thing that you are taught as a teacher is to befriend the custodian, especially if you're an art teacher. I teach in the basement of my school. And my second or third year teaching, the generator went out, the lights went out, and it was pitch dark in the basement. And I was retelling this story to my coworkers and saying, here I am in my basement in the pitch dark, saying, help. And I was recounting the story with Mr. Pat, and I said, do you remember that? I think it was before you were here. And he said, no, I was there. That's why you have a flashlight in your room and why I check the security lights once a month. And I don't think that something so small and so important will get on the maintenance list of the big-box staff that gets put in my building. I also don't think that my husband will condone a new man buying me coffee that he won't allow me to pay for. So I end with humor, but I do urge you to consider taking this opportunity that not many districts have right now, to be proactive in a way that supports our identity as a district. Thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Meyer, I believe is going to...
I'm sorry.
...make the response.
In 2003, I was not on the school board. I had never been to a school board meeting. My high school senior daughter called me and said, Dad, the school board is going to cut the girls' cross-country team. They're going to merge the two cross-country teams for East and West. There's only going to be one team, and not as many girls can run. So I came to my first school board meeting in, I think it was April or May of 2003. In April of 2004, I was elected to the board for the first time. Every year since 2003, since I've been keeping track, we have lost ground financially from Madison. Every year. And we sit here, seven board members, many nights with, you know, bless you all, I know you have a lot going on, everybody, with no one here. And we try to figure out how to make this work. At some point, this funding of public schools has to start going in the right direction instead of in the wrong direction. And so, please understand, when you're asking us how to vote on this, that if you get what you want, you can't all just go away and think it's all going to be fine. Because if you get what you want this time, it's probably going to come up again, or something else will come up again. So we need you to participate with us to somehow change what direction this has gone in, since I've been watching since 2003. It's a lot of years of losses strung together. And we've been a very successful, well-funded school district with no debt. But it's because we do these things to find a way. And if you ask us to stop that, to stop finding a way, something needs to change, where the culture for public schools needs to go in a different direction.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. And I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Sean O'Rear. My address is 2350 North 89th. And I'd like to come back to that, because that's a very good comment. But the first thing I wanted to talk about that stuck in my head was something you said earlier, which was, if you three and the superintendent do your job, you'll save us 9.25, you know, .9 million. What happens if you don't? I've heard not much oversight in how we're going to look at this going forward, how the rollout's going to be communicated back to the people. And I saw some numbers, but I didn't see what went into all of those. I've been part of cuts in, you know, corporate, in companies, some of them I owned, and the numbers that you look at that look really attractive after a year don't always seem to pay out. And I think that's been said already tonight, so I'll drive that home. But I don't believe that we're going to get the same level of anything and spend $925,000 less. It just kind of sticks in my head as, great, now we're the Walmart of the school district. So we're just paying less. But that's a very good point that you just made, though. Something else has to change. I urge you to vote this down and give us another way. I am willing to do other things. I would rather my kids, you know, do... There's a lot of things that you can do that are educational, that cost less money. But taking the people out of it is the one piece you can't just remove. You can't take that away.
Is there any other comments? I would like to thank everybody for being here. I'd like to thank you for your thoughtful remarks, your heartfelt remarks. And as I said, Dr. Erdl will be following up with some answers to some of the specific questions that were asked. And the purpose of this initial presentation is for the board to hear from the community and consider before we have our vote in two weeks. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I say that? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Some people say the school board is not approachable. I saw a lot of teachers here tonight approaching us. Thank you. We appreciate your trust.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items at this time? Okay, if not, could I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into executive session to discuss terms of the charter contract for the Forest Exploration Center per Section 1985, 1C and E of the Wisconsin statute?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Mrs. Galanti?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Sve?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Should we take five or 10 minutes?
Sorry, down here or upstairs?
10. We're here. 10 minutes.
I almost locked it. That guy...